Good evening. This is the caucus meeting for May 14, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, Madam Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the home news tribune, The Star Ledger, and posted in the bulletin board, in the city's clerk's office, and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chambers, City Hall 260 High Street, at 5:30 PM. Right now it's 5:45. We just had a little delay because of the weather, and we're waiting for special guests that we have. So that's why we're a little late. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Morales.
Present.
Councilwoman Ferata.
Present.
Councilman Puccio.
Present.
Council President Tejada.
Present. Okay, we have a special presentation. The Mayor Cava recognizes the following Perth Amboy recreation wrestlers for their accomplishment this season. And I'm sorry if I pronounce it wrong, okay? Here we go. Hamza Mamu.
Magmu.
Magmu. Ian Egger. Elias Marmolejos. EJ Walker. Jacob Roman. Daniel Roman. Elayya Roman. Gia Falsom. Alicia Walker. Aleila Sepulveda. Jaya Cochran? Is that the way? All right.
Cochran.
Okay. So Mayor, it's all yours.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Madam Council President, and thank you to the entire city council for including this item on the agenda, this presentation, because this is a chance to recognize our amazing young athletes, along with the amazing coaches and supporters. And thank you for supporting programs like this. This is what makes programs like this possible. So we're going to continue to ask for your continued support. And we're here to celebrate the hard work and accomplishments of the students in the Office of Recreation Youth Wrestling Program. These young athletes have put in countless of hours in training to stay focused and represent our city with discipline and pride all season long. Their success is based on their efforts and the strong support around them, from their families, their loved ones, coaches, teachers, and our dedicated staff on the Office of I also want to, once again, thank the coaches who guided them every step of the way, helping shape these athletes to be confident and to be resilient young people. And at this moment, I also want to recognize Ken Ortiz, our superintendent of Recreation, for his leadership and continued commitment to the youth of the city of Perth Amboy. And at this time, I would like to invite Ken Ortiz and also the coaches to come up, say a few words about these young athletes and their impact on the city of Perth Amboy Recreation Youth Wrestling Program. Please come up. Okay. Gate, if you want to come here.
She's down or...
Nah, I'm just standing.
All right, so we have, for the first time ever this year, we had 11 state qualifiers, and then... So that's a little something to clap about. And then again, another first this year was, we had six state place winners, and then this year, we also had our first state girls' state champion, Jaya Cochran. So like I said, I've been doing this with now my brother, as well as June Rivas and Nelson De León, Wesley Fredericks, as well as T, for at least 10 years. I know it's more, but I'll just say 10. So we started from scratch, and we've definitely been building slowly. I'm very excited to continue to watch these kids. We have a banquet this Saturday, so I won't speak too long on it, because we'll be here all night. But so I'm really proud of this group. I know this group's going to stay continuing to get better, as well as get older, and I know they're really good role models for the younger students behind us. So thank you for these kids, and as well for the parents who've been supporting me and this program. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, I want to present Mayor citations. I have mayor citations for each of these young athletes, and yes, I'll be calling them up. First one is Hamad Magmu.
Hampton.
Hampton. I'm sorry. Hampton. Magmu.
Oh, my God, he's so cute.
It's like I'm calling up my son up here. My son's the same height. So Magmu, he showed exceptional determination, earning a podium finish at states and winning the B tournament in the TOT division. Congratulations. Next is Ian Egger. He demonstrated outstanding drive, becoming a state finalist and finishing in the top 32 in the bantam class. Congratulations. Next, I have Elias Marmolejos. He had a standout season with a third-place finish at states and top 12 ranking in the novice division. Congratulations. Next, EJ Walker. EJ Walker rose to the top of his bracket, winning the state qualifier and placing third in the entire state at 110 pounds. Next is Jacob Roman. Congratulations. He collected a series of honors, including mid-jersey champion and state qualifier, third place in the junior division. Congrats. Next is Daniel Roman. Captured multiple titles and placed fifth in the state in the intermediate 128-pound class. Next is Elijah Roman. Congratulations. He brought home an incredible season as a state finalist and four-time mid-jersey champion. Next is Gia Falsom. She led by example, placing sixth in the state among girls' intermediate athletes. Congratulations. Next is Alicia Walker. She's not here. Okay. She impressed with a state finalist finish and a B tournament championship in the TOT division. Congratulations. Next is Aleila Sepulveda.
Sepulveda.
Sepulveda. Aleila. She delivered a strong performance, placing third in the state and winning both the B tournament and state qualifier. And of course, Jaya Cochran, she made history this season, not only qualifying and winning states, but representing the city of Perth Amboy as a state champion. Congratulations once again. And tell me something, isn't this something to be proud of?
Yes.
Yeah? And you have the council, please come up too.
Hold your smile.
I'll look the other way, have to know and see.
I wanted to say a few words, actually. Thank you for the lives as well that participated, Brittany, Joanna, should we just like leave as well? Our daughter, your wife?
Jasmine.
Jasmine, sorry. No, no, I'm good. I just... Yeah. Because this is a community. This wrestling group is a community. Those young men that are here, I worked at Perth Amboy High School when they were there, and they were wrestlers, and you can see they came back into the community to give, you know, back to our children. They don't have to, they're volunteers. So are some of the other volunteers, the moms and things of that nature. But I wanted to talk about the what you need to be a wrestler, right, and what my perspective. If you're going to be a wrestler, you, one, you have to have a very short memory, because you could wrestle right now, win or lose, and in 20, 30 minutes, you have to wrestle again. And so you have to be humble, and you have to be mentally tough, and you have to be resilient, right? Because it's not easy to get out of wrestling, man, and have somebody tug you around for six minutes, or however many minutes these kids is very... And the training is very arduous, it's very, very tough. And I remember those young men in high school, training under Coach G and some of the other coaches, and they really showed out when they were in high school, and I appreciate that they came back and do this. And the reason why I talk about the mentality of a wrestler, or the type of person you have to be as a wrestler, because I witnessed something this year, when there was a young lady who was wrestling a boy, probably a little better than her, a little stronger, and she gave that young man all he could handle. And she didn't win, but her resiliency, her toughness showed out. And then afterwards, I told her, and I told her how proud I was of her, that she didn't quit, that she could have quit, and how hard she fought, even though she didn't win, and she showed that toughness, that Perth Amboy pride. And then when her mother texts me to tell me that she was a state champion this year, I said to myself, it's because that young lady gave it all she had, she represented Perth Amboy well, right? And she won. And she represents our city, and like all these young people are representing our city in the bright of lights. So Jaya, I know you and me had a conversation after the match, remember? And I told you that I was very proud of what you did that day, and I'm proud of all you guys, because you know what? It's not easy to be a wrestler, and it's not easy to run these volunteer programs. So I want to thank everybody for participating, thank the council as well for the support and the... Because I mean, this, I have the best job in the city, I get to work with great people,
job that they do with our youth.
right? And that's our investment, making this investment in our community and seeing these young people shine. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Congrats, congrats.
This is something that these kids will never forget, and we're so proud of everything that
And once again, thank you to the council for supporting.
they do for our city, representing our city all the way up to the state.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
So cute. So proud of our kids.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, let's continue. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey authorizing the vacation of certain portions of Front Street and Broad Street pursuant to NJSA 48, Column 67-1. Number two...
Council President, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. For ordinances two and three, those have... They require review by the planning board before the council's adoption. So when we get to the voting meeting, I'll ask you if we can carry the hearings on those until the first meeting in June.
Okay. So I need to read it, right?
Yeah, okay.
Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 redevelopment plan. Area one, the gateway pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Number three, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex approving certain amendments to the Focus 2020 redevelopment plan area. Two, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Reports. Number one, Fallon Barczewski Tax Collector submitted the monthly report of collections for the month of April 2025. Number two, Jill A. Goldie CFO Controller submitted the check register report in the total amount of $19,940,555 with 84 cents for the month of April. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey to amend an ordinance entitled "an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons." Ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 A of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about addition. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey amending an ordinance entitled "taxi cabs." Ordinance number 38-74 as amended, also known as Chapter 4046 of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. Resolutions. R207525, resolution of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey to read the 2025 municipal budget by title. R208525, authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year 2025 temporary budget in the amount of $6,000. R209525, appointing D. Talib Akil as fund commissioner and Iris Jimenez as alternate fund commissioner for the Public Entity Joint Insurance Fund. R210525, authorizing a refund in the amount of $150 to Ernesto Osorio, a tenant for the return of his key deposit for three keys with the Perth Amboy Harbor Side Marina. R211525, authorizing acceptance of an award from the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for fiscal year 25 state legislative grant program in the amount of R212525, authorizing the proper city official to execute a contract with the Morris Habitat for Humanity for the affordable homeownership construction project of 99 Pearl Place and 101 Pearl Place in the amount of $74,677.54 in accordance with the 50th program year of the Home Investment Partnership Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development created by the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, NAH. R213525, consenting to the appointment of Annie B. Carrasco Quintana Esquire as conflict prosecutor on a needed basis. R214525, authorizing a refund of overpayment of quarter, the first quarter 2025 to Eric D. Muñoz on Black 216 lot 14, 467 Pin Street in the amount of $1,646.81 with 81 cents. R215525, authorizing a refund of overpayment on utility account of number 6344-0 to U.S. Bank Trust, NACO, WRI Prop Management in the amount of $9,176.16. R217525, authorizing a refund of overpayment on utility account number 4721-0 to Eduardo Cancel on Black 139 lot 1386 High Street in the amount of $2,486.5. So we need to remove 218?
Yes.
Because...
They have to...
Just for the record?
Yeah, they have to finish up their records, they then it gets to...
They don't have all the paperwork yet.
They don't have everything situated yet.
Okay, so we're removing R218525. R219525, consenting to the appointment of Catherine Jackwes to the Rent Leveling Board as regular board member for two-year expiring December 31, 2026. Then I have Lay Starter. It's R220525, and this is a resolution of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey authorizing submission of a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the transportation alternative set aside fiscal year 25 grant program in the amount of $534,888. We have some communication, and anything for close session?
Nothing.
Nope? Anybody? No? You're good? Okay, no close session for this evening. Okay, public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Okay, it's open for anything.
Ten ballots, two five, nine four down. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the budget. Supposedly, rumor has it, you last year, you hired anywhere from 20 to 28 new employees. Now, Mr. Green, to see if you're talking about all the benefits going up, well, if you hire more employees, that means you're paying more pension, more health, more insurance. That's number one. So whatever's going on there, so you can't blame it on the unions, and the percentage would be...
Get the mic close, too.
That makes deviating, like. So the messages here, wait a minute, it's the unions, but the white-collar employees, when some of them looked at, in two years, they got over 10%. The unions are not getting that kind of thing in two years. So now let's go to the Park and Authority. Credit card fees, 2024, $65,000. Requested $214,000. $65,000 to $214,000. A little crazy here, maybe? I don't know. Park and Authority utilities, 24, $25,000. 25, $57,000. They went up that much? Double. Employee insurance, 2004, $42,000 to $79,000. I don't know, but that's a lot of money for, I don't know how many employees in the Park and Authority, but that's a lot of money going on in the Park and Authority. The FIC Medicare is actually went down $5,000, which is pretty funny, because it went up in another group. So I can't understand what the difference could be on how one group stays the same and another group goes down. So this is just your utilities here. Let's go back to Marina. Janitorial Supplies, 2024, $3,500. 25, $35,000. What are we doing here? $3,500 to $35,000? What's going on here? So the question is, anybody look at these numbers? I mean, this has taken me 20 minutes to a half hour to look at this stuff. Water Department, FICA Medicare, 14, 23, 21, so one of 7,000 for the last budget, and only 1,000 here. But, so it went up 8,000 in a year, two years. So what is happening with these numbers? If I see on one end doesn't go up, if I see on the other end goes up, it's all the same School Patrol, $100,000 more. I wonder why? $100,000. Now, I put it over into Mr. Green, and I've been complaining about it. I thought he got a number, $95,000, and that's got you way off, because it's $100,000 just for school patrol. That's not counting the traffic out there, when you go out there and see all the cones split out, everything else out there. So that's coming out of taxpayers' money. Whatever you're talking about, that school and whatever, and according to me, my dog at that school, he's still ain't got the gyms fixed, he's still got paint peeling, he's still got roofs leaking. I can't imagine, after this rain came down, that how much is leaking in that school. That school, that's absolutely amazing. Now we got a consultant, I think that's a consultant for the housing thing, but I'm not sure, but $50,000 to $60,000. So they get a $10,000 raise to be consultants. That's a pretty good raise in one year. Now, liability insurance, and that stuff... But, so it went up eight thousand in a year, two years. So what is happening with these numbers? If I see on one end doesn't go up, if I see on the other end goes up, it's all the same thing. School Patrol, hundred thousand dollars more. I wonder why? A hundred thousand dollars. Now, I put it over into Mr. Green, I've been complaining about it, I thought he got a number, ninety-five thousand dollars, and that's got me way off, because it's a hundred thousand just for school patrol. That's not counting the traffic out there, when you go out there and see all the cones split out, everything else out there. So that's coming out of taxpayers' money. Whatever you're talking about, that school and whatever, and according to me, my daughter at that school, he still ain't got the gyms fixed, he's still got paint peeling, he's still got roofs leaking, he's, I can't imagine after this rain came down, that how much is leaking in that school? That school, that's absolutely amazing. Now we got a consultant, I think that's the consultant for the housing thing, but I'm not sure, but fifty thousand to sixty thousand. So they get a ten thousand dollar raise to be consultants. That's a pretty good raise in one year. Now, your liability insurance and that stuff, I thought you're insurance guy, if I had time, I'd try reading some of the stuff you put on Facebook and somebody keeps sending me stuff about how he loves people, but it's just amazing the amounts of money that's going up here, and for Mr. Green, and I'm sorry, Mr. Green's not here, I haven't told him the same thing, you can't blame it on the unions. You can blame it on incompetence because of where you negotiated these pilots. These pilots have cost the taxpayers thousands of dollars. The school system, at least probably close to half a million dollars. And you don't even have anywhere around here, how much the school system's gonna raise the taxes? So how much money is the schools gonna raise? Can you answer that question? For the other ones, I'd love to get an answer for the rest of my day. How much is the school gonna raise them? Anybody know that?
Did you go to their budget meeting?
No, why should I go to that budget meeting? It comes to taxes, it's my tax bill here, not tax bill there, tax bill comes to here, and then we have to pay it. And if you, and I've been complaining about this, about pilots, we're no money for the schools. You keep doing it, no money for the schools.
Your time is up. Anybody else?
My name is Judith Ashman.
Pick up the microphone. Pick it up, pick it up, pick it up.
Yes, okay. My name is Judith Ashman, and I reside at three sixty-eight Rector Street in the Bayview. I'm referencing, uh, ordinance number three, I'm not gonna read everything, the concern I have with states approving certain amendments to the Focus twenty twenty redevelopment plan, Area Two, the waterfront, et cetera. Is that the area across from the Bayview that its Kushner intention to construct approximately six hundred and twenty, could be a little bit higher than that? Is that what ordinance number three is referring to? And then I'll follow up with my question. It's not?
Get all your questions, then he can.
Okay. Um, I'm not too impressed with Kushner. Why? Because I'm a original owner, and the Bayview had a substantial amount of poor construction. And I'm wondering what kind of units are being constructed, whether they're one, two, three bedrooms, whether they're low income, or are they a luxury apartment? One of my biggest concerns is the fact that when you have that amount of volume, you're gonna have issues concerning traffic and parking. Another issue that I have concern the intersection between Center Street and Commerce Street. When traffic is coming from Front Street, making a left turn, going west on Commerce Street, there's no stop signs there. And I brought this attention to some utility workers, and I'm not quite sure whether that was pursued with the necessary areas that need to look at it. Nothing has been developed. My concern is that when traffic makes a left onto Commerce from Front, they are speeding, and I always think that that may result in a very detrimental accident. Kushner, I'm not very impressed with their construction, and I hope that the city oversees it very carefully. And I'm going by by the big issues that we had in the Bayview building, and we continue to have those issues. Due to their poor construction. Where do I find, somewhere, whether it's in your website, or maybe you have some kind of documents that indicates Kushner redevelopment plan blueprint, et cetera? Whether they are going to, um, create a waterfront, which was originally, when I purchased my unit, they, uh, they brookland had constructing of an enhancement to what they already constructed for the Admiral and the, um, the Bayview, such as another set of condominiums. It looks like it's a significant change, and I want to familiarize myself with their intention, their structure, and what is the expectation of City Hall.
Those are all your questions?
Yep.
I'm not sure what you can answer.
Ordinance number three doesn't relate to that proposed project, uh, number one, that relates to, uh, Hall Avenue, and it's a more closer to the Harp Town, um, development, and it has nothing to do with the Kushner project. The Kushner redevelopment agreement, uh, between the, with the city and with Para is on file in the city clerk's office, so that is available. Um, it has all the specifics, um, just two of the issues that I heard, they will be market rate apartments for rent, uh, not condos, and, um, there is contemplated in the agreement development of, um, a walkway along the waterfront with other amenities which are all spelled out in the agreement.
Thank you. Anybody else?
How you doing? Did you hear me?
Yep.
My name's Scott F. Sedlazak, and, uh, I'm the retired president of Saint Peter's Church in New Brunswick, the conference of Saint Vincent de Paul Society. God gave me a strength to do it for ten years, and we kept like a thousand families, five seven thousand people getting homeless. The reason I kind of got it tight last time I talked here was the woman with the wheelchair, she was on the smush, I think, right? And, uh, she, uh, if she has to, you know, move, you have to really take good care of her because she'll pass away otherwise, that's seen happen a number of times. But I just wanted to talk on a more positive note, uh, as far as like, I guess the plan here in Perth Amboy is to make more money, so you have to have some things going on. And then those eight house or nine house when they come off of Route thirty-five into Herb Street, your right-hand side, maybe you paint them up like colorfully, like maybe like the islands half down in, uh, Barbados or wherever, so when they pass down, uh, it looks nice. And then, uh, you know, paint those things up, and then, uh, basically, uh, exit eight A in the turnpike, uh, there's about seventeen thousand senior citizens living down there, Rossmore, Clearbrook, McCordia, the ponds, there's a number of them down there. And I figured you could take, uh, maybe you could send somebody down there into the clubhouses where they have all the, uh, the people, uh, you know, handle that kind of stuff, what do they call, you know, they have regular clubhouses, and then they have people for entertainment. Maybe you could find out, uh, like a feasibility study or something like that, if they'd be willing to, uh, take a bus ride toward a bus and bring them down here, and, uh, you could maybe have like a brunch by the bay kind of thing during the week, and have, take them along, explain, hand out these pamphlets, put a bunch of these things, and then hometown trolley things down here, and take them around the whole place. A lot of them probably, uh, know about the movie Seventeen Seventy-Six, I think it was a play also in nineteen seventy-six, in the second anniversary of the United States, and they mentioned Perth Amboy in there, uh, Ben Franklin, uh, someone being arrested by the, uh, the Continental Army because he was a British governor. And then, uh, just, just bring them down into town here, uh, and then, uh, let's see, and one thing I think you make money on, make it look a little better, there's a lot of jewelry stores in town, kind of make it like, like a Forty-seventh Street canal, some from New York later, and then, uh, like a canal street kind of deal, you know, like the jewelry district over there, and, uh, because if you're gonna be people on a bus down that are old, they're gonna see like all the, all the, what do they call them? The pot shops, the smoke shops, whatever they are, you don't notice that, it's like the ten spot with all the short dresses and stuff. I don't know if they'll turn them on or turn them off, but it doesn't matter, just bring them down to, uh, by the barge over there, and the other, the, uh, the armory, and that's where you could probably have a brunch by the bay. But then I was thinking, uh, what do they call it over there? Like, and you need a bagel shop here, to be honest with you, you call Bagels by the Bay or something like that. And then I was thinking about nine forty, uh, State Street, there's that, uh, the old King's Highway Building over there, it's an old, I guess, steel mill over there. I, you know, I was just thinking about this, uh, maybe you could try and get a casino in there, I don't gamble, but I, uh, maybe you could try and get a casino over there? You probably put a second level right in there, except that that building's really well-built, it's got seventy thousand square feet, and if you get some, like, you know, you gotta go down like the God or one of the places down there, you probably, you know, just to like bring attention to the city of, uh, Perth Amboy, and then, uh, what am I gonna say over here? And then as far as the police department, you have a top-notch police department, explained something to you last week, and the last time was about you need more police officers, because the way that these things are rated by the world, the world, as far as like, uh, it, uh, what do they call it, it's like credits and stuff like that? You compare it to New York City over there, there's five point three fourth police officers based on thirty-three thousand guys working over there, uh, which it comes out to like, three hundred police officers would have to have over here to have the number, like where your secure zone, because once it gets below, the world's thing is for a country like Japan or something like that, or a state, or a province, or a county, or a city, where, once it gets down below fifty percent of security, it becomes a city in decline, and that affects like people like N M Rothschild and stuff, going to all these insurance companies, it affects your credit rating, different things like that, so you need a hundred and fifty, you might be able to do it with the auxiliaries and stuff, they have to train their weapons, I'll tell you right now. And then, uh, basically, uh, maybe you could throw on, uh, four, uh, more, uh, women police officers, female police officers, maybe have a little, I've got like a four, a little team of four, uh, police, women police officers with rottweilers, and, uh, and they have to promote this, because the people are afraid to come to this town. I'm, you know, I'm a white guy, gringo, whatever they call me over here, they don't like me calling me macho, but the gringo, I don't care. As far as, uh, you just have to have more of a security thing going on. And I'll tell you something, the Venus Town, uh, they don't treat, they, they wanna keep this locked up the way it is, and I don't blame them, because once people come in and start developing, the price of housing go up, rents are gonna go up, and stuff like that, and you just gotta watch out for that stuff, and, uh, that's basically about it. Oh yeah, except for, uh, one more thing, it's Spikes Canine Fund dot org, you can check them out.
Thank you.
The information, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? All right, uh, since we don't have a closed session, I just need a five minutes to start. We can adjourn this meeting and then come back. So I need a motion to close, um, the caucus.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, and. Good evening, this is the city council meeting for May fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Residing officer of the council, my lady Tejeda wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, chambers, City Hall two sixty High Street, right after the caucus and closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices, should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please. Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda. Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body, provide us with the wisdom to make the right decision for our city, for our citizens, for our residents, and for everybody, everyone who comes to our city. Uh, I also wanna pray for our young scholars, and, um, those who are soon will be out of school, protect them and guide them during this summer. For our officers, for our troops that are away, and those who are in here protecting our freedom and their family, and with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is the throne. Okay, we had our presentation at the caucus meeting of our recreation department. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Number one, ordinance of the city council of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadows Socks, New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of certain portions of Front Street and Broad Street pursuant to N J S A forty-eight, column sixty-seven dash one. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? It's open to the public if someone wants to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda. Yes.
Council President, I would recommend a vote to carry the hearing for both ordinances number two and three, uh, we can vote on them separately to do this, but a vote to carry them until the June eleventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting.
June eleventh?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we have to do each one separate?
Please.
Okay, so number two, an ordinance of City of Perth Amboy County of Meadows Socks approving certain amendments to the Focus twenty twenty redevelopment plan, Area One, the gateway pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. I need a motion to have the public hearing on June, on our meeting of June eleventh.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda. Yes. Number three, ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadows Socks approving certain amendments to the Focus twenty twenty redevelopment plan, Area Two, the waterfront pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. I need a motion to move the public hearing to, to the meeting of June eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda. Yes. Agenda, public comments, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open for agenda item only. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comments.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Reports, Fallon Barczewski Tax Collector submitted the monthly report for, of collections of the month of April twenty twenty-five. Number two, Jill A. Goldie, CFO Controller, submitted the check register report in the total amount of nineteen million, nine hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, eighty, with eighty-four cents for the month of April. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadows Socks, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as Chapter two fifty-five six of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about additions. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda. Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy County of Meadows Socks, New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled Taxi Caps, ordinance number thirty-eight dash seventy-four as amended, also known as Chapter four oh four six of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio? Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda? Yes. Resolution, look it over if you want to. Full anything. The number 218 was full. Okay. All right, resolution, our consent agenda, R207-525 through R217-525, R219 through R220. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda? Okay, we have some communications, closed session. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public on any item.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Council comments. Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to congratulate all the wrestlers, Kenny Ortiz, Samantha, for all the amazing, Diane Roman as well for the work and for, may the wrestlers continue succeeding, especially as a young age. That is very inspiring and I know they're going to inspire even more. So congratulations to the parents as well and all volunteers. And that's about it. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Morales.
Thank you for everyone that was here. Also want to congratulate our young athletes for the wrestling team. Congratulate them all. We are so extremely proud of our youth. They are the future of our Perth Amboy. So we are very proud and especially they representing us throughout the state is really something to be very proud of. And I think we're, is it Memorial Weekend coming?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So happy Memorial Weekend to everybody. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peralta?
Just to add on to my fellow teammates here have said, I just wanted to say thank you, not just to the recreation department for constantly pushing, you know, for the youth and the children of our community, but also to those that give their time to this. As Mr. Ortiz has stated earlier today, this is a free position, you know, and they're just here to serve our community and that is appreciated. And look how far, because of their efforts, these children have made it. And I hope and pray that they continue to move forward with this and stick to wrestling because clearly they're good at it. And a happy Memorial Day weekend. I hope everyone enjoys their time off, if you have time off, with your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Puccio, you have a lot to say.
A little bit, a little bit, a little bit. Congratulations to the wrestlers. Fine job. I wrestled way back in the day. It is tough. Especially a good shout out to Kenny Ortiz. I mean, he does an excellent job along with Diane Roman and the volunteer coaches. With that said, I want to send a huge shout out to the other 24 members of the Perth Amboy Police Department who completed the police unity tour. Eighteen riders, including myself, completed the journey of 325 miles to Washington and we all made it back safely. And I have to say, and I told them I would give them a big shout out, it was probably the greatest bunch of kids I ever rode with in the 20 years that I've been doing the unity tour. Just a great bunch of kids.
I think you deserve it. Give them applause, all of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you all.
And I just want to point out about those, and I call them kids, but
Young men.
They're young men and women.
Yes, true.
Are very good police officers. Some of them are community policing officers and I could just see how much they love the city and how much they love their job. Because, you know, the journey to Washington was tough. The first day was in the rain like it is today and we faced a lot of challenges and these kids just hung in there and just did it. But they, knowing these young men and women, I see them doing their job every single day. And you know what? I'm proud to say that I was a Perth Amboy police officer and that those, those kids, and all of them, all the Perth Amboy police officers and men and women, I'm proud to say that they do an excellent job. We're lucky to have these people. All right, that's it for now.
Thank you. We're very proud of all of you, the retirees and also the ones that are on the force right now. God protect them wherever they're out there because there's a lot of dangers everywhere. So we just have to pray for them. Also, I want to say about our, our youth, our young wrestlers, I know they, they do a great job. This is one way of keeping our children and our youth focused, doing some type of sports, some type of activity. And thank you to the parents and everybody else, the volunteers and everyone who is involved in that. I just want to tell the community that starting on May 28, which is our next city council meeting, until the one in July, which I don't remember the date, but from the 28th on, our meeting will be moved to the YMCA.